Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance to, with Chapter 231 Public Law of 1975.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Smangiotto, County Administrator. I'd like to welcome everyone to this year's 2025 Reorganization Meeting of the Commissioners. Be a lot of swearing of new members as well this evening and new positions to be held. I would first like to ask all of the elected officials that are in the room to please rise and be noticed. Please. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you. What I'd like to do is to welcome you this evening. This is a special occasion. It's ceremonial, but we deal with it the right way every year. We'll have, we'll have these certifications. We'll have a number of different, number of different members being sworn back in and committee seats and liaison chips will be addressed tonight as well. What I'd like to do next is to have everyone stand so we can salute the flag.
My pleasure to begin. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Acasio, would you please come up and give the invocation?
Okay. Good evening. We want to congratulate the Commissioner and the county clerks who are going to be sworn in tonight. Thank you for the invitation for us to be part of the invocation and benediction. For us, truly, it is an honor and a privilege. We are not only praying here for you tonight, but every night, I believe God will sustain you. Let me read a scripture before we get into the prayer. In 1 Timothy, Chapter 2, Verses 1 through 3, says the following, "Therefore I exalt, first of all, supplication, prayers into session, and giving thanks be made for all men, for kings and for all who are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceful life in all godliness and reverence; but this is a good and acceptable sight of God, our Savior." In our prayer, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we come before your presence, asking for your guidance for the Board of Commissioners and the county clerk, that you will give them wisdom and that they will be able, that they will be able to work in harmony to fulfill the goals for our community. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen. Amen. Be blessed.
We are now going to have the certification of election of county clerk Celeste Riley by Deputy County Clerk Sandra Olbridge.
Good evening, everyone. I present to you the certificate of election, the Board of County Canvassers of Cumberland County, New Jersey. The said board does determine that an election held in the said county on the fifth day of November in the year of our Lord 2024, Celeste M. Riley was duly elected as county clerk in the county of Cumberland. In witness where of, I have here unto set my hand this 25th day of November, AD 2024, Russell Creach, Chairman of the Board of Canvassers, and attested by Sandra Olbridge, Acting County Clerk for Celeste M. Riley, County Clerk, in the state of New Jersey, County of Cumberland. I, Sandra Olbridge, Deputy Clerk of the County of Cumberland, do hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct statement of the Board of County Canvassers in relation to the said election. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand an official seal this 25th day of November, 2024, Sandra Olbridge, Acting County Clerk for Celeste M. Riley, County Clerk.
County Clerk Celeste Riley's oath of office by the Honorable John Versacelli, New Jersey State Senator, 3rd District.
She was great. About 10 minutes. Let me just say for, for one minute, thank you very much. Happy New Year, number one. Thank you for having the confidence in me to be your county clerk for another term. And I appreciate that you all came out here to show your support. And this is my grandson, Gennaro. That's my granddaughter, Charlotte. That's my grandson, Patrick. My son-in-law, Gennaro. My daughter, Megan. This is John Versacelli. And this is my husband.
His name.
Right. And I also want to say one more thing. Steve Sweeney, Senate President, former Senate President, Steve Sweeney is here. He came to support. And I do truly appreciate it. And one of the people that I first ran with, Albert Kelly, Mayor now of the great city of Bridgeton this year also. So we started together.
Happy New Year to everyone. It is an honor to be part of this ceremony and this process that we go through in the presence we have as Americans to do this. Celeste, it is a great privilege to be with you. I raise my hand. Handle the Bible. You're all set. Just put my glasses on. I, Celeste Riley.
I, Celeste Riley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
Justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of county clerk.
Of the office of county clerk.
To the great county of Cumberland.
To the great, for the great county of Cumberland.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
This is my daughter Catherine and my son called Sam.
Anyone else?
He's Uncle Sam.
We're now going to have the certification of election of Commissioners Antonio Romero and Commissioners Robert Ostino by Deputy Clerk, Deputy County Clerk Sandra Olbridge.
Okay. I present to you the certi- certificate of election, Board of County Canvassers of Cumberland County, New Jersey. The said board does determine that an election held in the said county on the fifth day of November in the year of our Lord 2024, Robert A. Ostino and Antonio Romero were duly elected as county commissioners in the county of Cumberland. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand this 25th day of November, AD 2024, Russell Creach, Chairman of the Board of Canvassers, attested by Sandra Olbridge, Acting County Clerk for Celeste M. Riley, County Clerk, in the state of New Jersey, County of Cumberland. I, Sandra Olbridge, Deputy Clerk of the County of Cumberland, do hereby certify that the foregoing is a true and correct statement of the Board of County Canvassers in relation to the said election. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand an official seal this 25th day of November, 2024, Sandra Olbridge, Acting County Clerk for Celeste M. Riley, County Clerk.
Commissioner Robert Ostino's oath of office by the Honorable Albert Kelly, Mayor, City of Bridgeton.
I, Robert Ostino.
I, Robert Ostino.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
Allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties of the office of county commissioner.
Perform all the duties of the county commissioner.
For the county of Cumberland.
For the county of Cumberland.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you our newest Commissioner.
Thank you. Speech. Speech. Again. Like Celeste said, I thank you for the trust you put in me, and I will work very hard to make this county a better county and represent everybody in this county. Thank you.
Commissioner Antonio Romero's oath of office by the Honorable Michael Altesta Jr., New Jersey State Senator, 1st District.
Tony, please place your left hand on the Bible, my friend, and your right hand in the air. Left hand on the Bible. Yep, there we go. Please repeat after me, and I'll stand to the side so you can get nice pictures, okay? But please repeat after me. I, Antonio Romero.
I, Antonio Romero.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
For the county of Cumberland.
For the county of Cumberland.
According to the best of my ability.
For the county of Cumberland.
For the county of Cumberland.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Sure. All right, the sign. I won't forget, I signed you on that.
I just want a few words. I'm very proud to be here today. Being the second time Hispanic Commissioner, whoever stepped in this arena, I liked it. I'm very proud of my wife, who's put up with me for numerous years in, in campaigning for others in my campaign, for my kids who stood behind me, that I took time away from playing pickleball and, and being around me. You know, and most of all, for all the, all the departments that were under me, that did a great job for this county. And I'm very proud of them. So I'm very happy to be here, to meet you. You are number one. Silly, I love you. And we don't forget, you know, we, three, three more years, and my community, most of all, the Spanish community, who's backed me up for many years. And I appreciate you, and I love you. By the way, I didn't cry, so you guys owe me dinner.
Do I have nominations for Director of the Board of Commissioners for the year two thousand and twenty-five?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion to co-- do I have any more nominations? Do I have a motion to close nomination?
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Rule call.
Commissioner Olbrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Do I? Deputy Director's oath of office by the Honorable Michael Altestia, Jr., New Jersey State Senator, First District.
Arthur, in the routine, place your left hand on the Bible and your right hand in the air and please repeat after me. I, Arthur Marshon.
I, Arthur Marshon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
The state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
County Commissioner.
County Commissioner.
For the county of Cumberland.
For the county of Cumberland.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Sure. All right, the sign. I won't forget, I signed you on that.
I just want a few words. I'm very proud to be here today. Being the second time Hispanic Commissioner, whoever stepped in this arena, I liked it. I'm very proud of my wife, who's put up with me for numerous years in, in campaigning for others in my campaign, for my kids who stood behind me, that I took time away from playing pickleball and, and being around me. You know, and most of all, for all the, all the departments that were under me, that did a great job for this county. And I'm very proud of them. So I'm very happy to be here, to meet you. You are number one. Silly, I love you. And we don't forget, you know, we, three, three more years, and my community, most of all, the Spanish community, who's backed me up for many years. And I appreciate you, and I love you. By the way, I didn't cry, so you guys owe me dinner.
Do I have nominations for Director of the Board of Commissioners for the year two thousand and twenty-five?
I'd like to nominate Commissioner.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion to co-- do I have any more nominations? Do I have a motion to close nomination?
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Rule call.
Commissioner Olbrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marshon.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to vote by consent agenda on resolutions two thousand and twenty-five dash one? Resolution adopting the two thousand and twenty-five temporary budget for the county of Cumberland. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash two, resolution adopting the cash management plan of the county of Cumberland, New Jersey. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash three, resolution imposing interest on delay of taxes. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash four, resolution designating committees. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash five, resolution establishing the two thousand and twenty-five board of, board of county and commission liaison and member assignments. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash six, resolution designating regular monthly meetings. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash seven, resolution designating official newspapers and authorizing and directing the clerk to subscribe to the official newspapers. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash eight, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas A. Albrecht and Commissioner Sandra Taylor as liaisons to the Bay Area Council. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash nine, resolution appointing Commissioner Sandra Taylor and Robert Ostino as co-liaisons to the Office of Aging Advisory Council. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash ten, resolution appointing Commissioners Douglas A. Albrecht and Robert Ostino as co-liaisons to the four H extension service. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash eleven, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Robert Ostino as co-liaison to the Cumberland County Human Services Advisory Council. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twelve, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow and Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaisons to the Cumberland Workforce Development and the Cumberland Salem Workforce Development Board. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirteen, resolution appointing Commissioner Antonio Romero and Commissioner Victoria Ludes as liaisons to the Cumberland County Education Technical Center. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash fourteen, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow and Commissioner Arthur Marshon as members of the Cumberland County Education and School Board of Estimates. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash fifteen, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow and Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaisons to the Cumberland County Veterans Commission. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash sixteen, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow and Commissioner Arthur Marshon as liaisons to the Cumberland County Utilities Authority. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash seventeen, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaison to the Tourism Advisory Council. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash eighteen, resolution designating Commissioner Sandra Taylor as the county of Cumberland's voting member on the Policy Board of the South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization and Commissioner Antonio Romero as alternate. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash nineteen, resolution appointing Commissioner Arthur Marshon as representative to the South Jersey Economic Development District and Commissioner James Sorrow as alternate. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty, resolution appointing Commissioner Sandra Taylor and Commissioner James Sorrow as members of the Recreation Commission. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-one, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow and Commissioner Antonio Romero as co-liaisons to the Cumberland County Department of Public Works. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-two, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow and Commissioner Sandra Taylor as members of the Cumberland County Planning Board. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-three, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow as representative to the New Jersey Association of Counties and County Administrator Kevin Smannato as alternate. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-four, resolution appointing Commissioner Arthur Marshon and Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner James Sorrow as members of the Cumberland County Mental Health and Addictions Board. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-five, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas A. Albrecht and Commissioner Arthur Marshon as representatives to the Cumberland County Library Commission. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-six, resolution appointing Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaison to the Children's Interagency Coordinating Council and Commissioner Robert Ostino as alternate liaison. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-seven, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow, Commissioner Arthur Marshon and Commissioner Sandra Taylor as commissioners of the Cumberland County Insurance Commission. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-eight, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow and Commissioner Arthur Marshon as liaison to the Cumberland County Improvement Authority. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash twenty-nine, resolution appointing Commissioner Antonio Romero and Commissioner Robert Ostino as liaisons to the Cumberland County Human Services Advisory Council. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Robert Ostino as members to the Human Relations Commission. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-one, resolution appointing Commissioner Sandra Taylor as liaison to the Cumberland County Historical Society and Commissioner Arthur Marshon as alternate. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-two, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Douglas Albrecht as members of the Cumberland County Cooperative Affairs Association. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-three, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas A. Albrecht Commissioner and, and Commissioner Victoria Ludes as liaisons to the Cumberland County Empowerment Zone. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-four, resolution appointing Commissioner James Sorrow and Commissioner Arthur Marshon as members of the Cumberland County Economic Development Board. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-five, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner James Sorrow as members of the Cumberland County Department of Education. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-eight, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas A. Albrecht as liaison to the Cultural Heritage Commission and Commissioner Robert Ostino as alternate. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-nine, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas Albrecht and Commissioner Sandra Taylor as co-liaisons of the Cumberland County Social Services. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash forty, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes as liaison to the Agricultural Development Board and Commissioner Antonio Romero's alternate. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash forty-one, resolution appointing Commissioner Antonio Romero and Commissioner Victoria Ludes as members of the Cumberland County Board of Health. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash forty-two, resolution appointing Commissioner Sandra Taylor and Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaisons to the Cumberland County Board of Elections. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash forty-three, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Robert Ostino as liaisons to the Board of Agriculture. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash forty-four, resolution appointing member to the County Insurance Fund Commission. Do I have a motion and second to vote by consent agenda on resolutions two thousand and twenty-five dash one through two thousand and twenty-five dash forty-four?
Second.
Commissioner Olbrich.
Just, yes, a one comment, Director. Can we please consider, the cover reminders provided over and over again, that they actually reached more than the two newspapers together, they could also be considered in the future.
Second.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marshon.
Yes.
Motion carries. Do I? Deputy Director's oath of office by the Honorable Michael Altestia, Jr., New Jersey State Senator, First District.
Arthur, in the routine, place your left hand on the Bible and your right hand in the air and please repeat after me. I, Arthur Marshon.
I, Arthur Marshon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
Everybody, I really appreciate you coming out tonight. I know you have busy lives, but I do appreciate. This is my second time being a Director. If I told you the year that I was Director before, there's too many people in here that weren't even born yet. That was 2002. But I will promise you this, that we will work very, very hard for you and move the county in a positive direction. Thank you very much. One more thing. I have to thank my wife. This year's we're together in 2025. Remember? This will be 50 years that we're together. One thing I want to say to you, and this is very important. No matter what I ever did, even this last round, coming to run for County Commissioner in '23, I asked her, I said, "Do you have a problem with this?" And she looked at me and she said, "I've always had your back. I always want you to know." So thank you so much. Always loved Tony Romero. We need a nomination for Deputy Director. Do I have a nomination, please?
I'd like to nominate for Deputy Director Arthur Marchand. I'd like to second that.
Okay, we have a nomination for Arthur Marchand. We have a second.
Are there any further nominations? Seeing down to we have a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Motion carries. Do I? Deputy Director's Oath of Office by the Honorable Michael Altesta Jr., New Jersey State Senator, First District.
Arthur, in the routine, place your left hand on the Bible and your right hand in the air and please repeat after me. I, Arthur Marchand.
I, Arthur Marchand.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Deputy Director.
Deputy Director.
Of the Board of County Commissioners.
Of the Board of County Commissioners.
For the county of Cumberland.
For the county of Cumberland.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Deputy Director.
So I'm going to make this short and sweet. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight on this cold night. A special thank you, of course, to my wife Angela and my parents for coming out here tonight. What I can promise everyone is I will do my absolute best in my new role. I really appreciate this board putting their faith behind me. But I promise everyone I will do my absolute best for the good people of Cumberland County. Thank you. We need to call the board.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to open public comment?
Seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public that wish to step forward and add any comment on resolutions? Can I please step forward? Since there are no one, motion to close.
Second.
I need a little.
Oh, motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Send it, agenda, please.
Resolution 2025-1, resolution adopting the 2025 temporary budget for the county of Cumberland. Resolution 2025-2, resolution adopting the cash management plan of the county of Cumberland, New Jersey. Resolution 2025-3, resolution imposing interest on delay for taxes. Resolution 2025-4, resolution designating committees. Resolution 2025-5, resolution establishing the 2025 Board of County and Division Liaison and member assignments. Resolution 2025-6, resolution designating regular monthly meetings. Resolution 2025-7, resolution designating official newspapers and authorizing and directing the clerk to subscribe to the official newspapers. Resolution 2025-8, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas A. Albrecht and Commissioner Sandra Taylor as liaisons to the Bay Shore Council. Resolution 2025-9, resolution appointing Commissioner Sandra Taylor and Robert Ostino as co-liaisons to the Office of Aging Advisory Council. Resolution 2025-10, resolution appointing Commissioners Douglas A. Albrecht and Robert Ostino as co-liaisons to the 4-H extension service. Resolution 2025-11, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Robert Ostino as co-liaison to the Cumberland County Human Services Advisory Council. Resolution 2025-12, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro and Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaisons to the Altitude and Workforce Development and the Cumberland Salem Workforce Development Board. Resolution 2025-13, resolution appointing Commissioner Antonio Romero and Commissioner Victoria Ludes as liaisons to the Cumberland County Vacation and Technical Center. Resolution 2025-14, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro and Commissioner Arthur Marchand as members of the Cumberland County Vacation School Board of Estimates. Resolution 2025-15, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro and Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaisons to the Cumberland County Veterans Commission. Resolution 2025-16, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro and Commissioner Arthur Marchand as liaisons to the Cumberland County Utilities Authority. Resolution 2025-17, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaison to the Tourism Advisory Council. Resolution 2025-18, resolution designating Commissioner Sandra Taylor as the county of Cumberland's voting member on the Policy Board of the South Jersey Transportation Planning Organization and Commissioner Antonio Romero as alternate. Resolution 2025-19, resolution appointing Commissioner Arthur Marchand as representative to the South Jersey Economic Development District and Commissioner James Soro as alternate. Resolution 2025-20, resolution appointing Commissioner Sandra Taylor and Commissioner James Soro as members of the Recreation Commission. Resolution 2025-21, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro and Commissioner Antonio Romero as co-liaisons to the Cumberland County Department of Public Works. Resolution 2025-22, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro and Commissioner Sandra Taylor as members of the Cumberland County Planning Board. Resolution 2025-23, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro as representative to the New Jersey Association of Counties and County Administrator Kevin Smannato as alternate. Resolution 2025-24, resolution appointing Commissioner Arthur Marchand and Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner James Soro as members of the Cumberland County Mental Health and Addictions Board. Resolution 2025-25, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas A. Albrecht and Commissioner Arthur Marchand as representatives to the Cumberland County Library Commission. Resolution 2025-26, resolution appointing Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaison to the Children's Interagency Coordinating Council and Commissioner Robert Ostino as alternate liaison. Resolution 2025-27, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro, Commissioner Arthur Marchand, and Commissioner Sandra Taylor as commissioners of the Cumberland County Insurance Commission. Resolution 2025-28, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro and Commissioner Arthur Marchand as liaison to the Cumberland County Improvement Authority. Resolution 2025-29, resolution appointing Commissioner Antonio Romero and Commissioner Robert Ostino as liaisons to the Cumberland County Human Services Advisory Council. Resolution 2025-30, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Robert Ostino as members to the Human Relations Commission. Resolution 2025-31, resolution appointing Commissioner Sandra Taylor as liaison to the Cumberland County Historical Society and Commissioner Arthur Marchand as alternate. Resolution 2025-32, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Douglas Albrecht as members of the Cumberland County Cooperative Fair Association. Resolution 2025-33, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas A. Albrecht, Commissioner and Commissioner Victoria Ludes as liaisons to the Cumberland County Empowerment Zone. Resolution 2025-34, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro and Commissioner Arthur Marchand as members of the Cumberland County Economic Development Board. Resolution 2025-35, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner James Soro as members of the Cumberland County Department of Education. Resolution 2025-36, resolution appointing Commissioner James Soro, Commissioner Arthur and Arthur Marchand as members of the Rowan College of South Jersey Board of Estimates. Resolution 2025-37, resolution appointing Commissioner Arthur Marchand and Commissioner Victoria Ludes as co-liaisons to Rowan College of South Jersey. Resolution 2025-38, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas A. Albrecht as liaison to the Cultural Heritage Commission and Commissioner Robert Ostino as alternate. Resolution 2025-39, resolution appointing Commissioner Douglas Albrecht and Commissioner Sandra Taylor as co-liaisons of the Cumberland County Social Services. Resolution 2025-40, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes as liaison to the Agriculture Development Board and Commissioner Antonio Romero as alternate. Resolution 2025-41, resolution appointing Commissioner Antonio Romero and Commissioner Victoria Ludes as members of the Cumberland County Board of Health. Resolution 2025-42, resolution appointing Commissioner Sandra Taylor and Commissioner Antonio Romero as liaisons to the Cumberland County Board of Elections. Resolution 2025-43, resolution appointing Commissioner Victoria Ludes and Commissioner Robert Ostino as liaisons to the Board of Agriculture. Resolution 2025-44, resolution appointing member to the County Insurance Fund Commission. Do I have a motion and second to vote by consent and agenda on Resolutions 2025-1 through 2025-44?
Seven.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Just, yes, a one comment, Director. Can we please consider the cover reminders provided over and over again that they actually reach more than the two newspapers together, they could also be considered in the future?
Seven.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero. Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes.
Do I have a motion and second to adopt Resolutions 2025-1 through 2025-44 by consent?
Seven.
Second.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Ludes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Ostino. Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Soro.
Yes. I guess I am up. We would like to have comments from the new director. First of all, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, honorable public work servants, my fellow commissioners, and all elected officials present here this evening. As your new commisioning director, I'm happy to be here now in 2025. I believe that I'm exactly where I need to be. Let me begin by reporting on several noteworthy projects and initiatives. It has been a year of many challenges for this Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. We've had to address numerous problems and challenges, and I'm very proud to report that we've had been very successful in solving many of them. We have also brainstormed some innovative ideas. For instance, the idea of creating a public park system, starting with Cumberland County Fairground renovation project estimated to cost $2.5 million. To make improvements to our fairgrounds so it can be used year-round. To expand our public park system further, we plan to meet with the DEP and Green Acres officials for the acquisition of other open spaces. There are several other projects initiated by this board that need to be completed this coming year. We promise to collaborate with local municipal governments to make a difference in the lives of all citizens of Cumberland County. We're continuing to monitor the Fortescue Gandy's Beach wastewater treatment plant expansion. When completed, this project will unlock a multitude of opportunities for the beautification and expansion. It will add recreation opportunities and will improve the environment of the other Jersey Shore. It is my belief it will also increase economic development and employment opportunities in our county. We're continuing to make improvements to county roads and have tackled several emergency projects throughout the county like dangerous intersections and roads that have collapsed to help prevent accidents and to keep our citizens safe. Furthermore, this board has been instrumental in negotiating and resolving seven lawsuits and had successfully negotiated over seven union contracts that have been neglected over the years by previous administrations. As we begin the new year, I'm confident that this board will continue our momentum and will try to complete every initiative on our shoulders. I'm happy and humbled to be back as your director and pledge the word with every department in the county and our dedicated workforce to the common goal of serving the people of Cumberland County. Now, that was the original end of my speech, but having OCD and EHAD, whatever other alphabet we have. Back in 2002, when I was Director, myself and another freeholder, we used to call ourselves freeholder at the time, started an initiative for a county transportation system. It didn't work out only because I lost election. I couldn't continue. But a lot of the ideas that I had back then, I want to initiate this year with the help of this board. I think this is something that we need, and we've even had New Jersey Transit recommend, advise us to separate and have our own Department of Transportation. Now, is it a big initiative? Yes, it is. Can it be done? Yes, it can. I've talked with a number of different organizations. The hospital is one of them. How we can coordinate NJDOT, how we can coordinate. We have individuals in our county that can't get from one area to the other because they can't afford cars. They don't know how to drive, all right, and they need to get to work. So that's one of the initiatives I would like to be working on this year. And this was running through my head as I was giving this speech here, and I forgot to write it down, but I don't want to forget about telling everyone about it. This is something that is very important. And I really do believe we create this new Department of Transportation. It's really going to help the people of Cumberland County, and isn't that what it's all about? Helping the citizens of Cumberland County. So I appreciate everyone coming here, and I hope you have a great night. May God bless you all. Thank you.
And now we're going to have the benediction by Pastor Casio.
Congratulations to all. As Pastor of Rock of Salvation, we're here to serve. Anything that you may need, we're here to serve you. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you. We thank you once again for this opportunity you've given us, Lord, and we thank you for these men and women, Lord, that you have put in their heart to serve our community, Lord, our county, Lord. So we just pray once again, Lord, that you will guide them, give them wisdom, that you will give them your peace that surpasses all understanding, Lord. And we pray for your traveling mercy as we leave this place, and Jesus' name we pray. Amen and amen. Be blessed. Have a good evening.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
6:52.